Good evening. I'd like to call to order the October 3, 2017, meeting of the Buncombe County Commission. Thank you all for being with us this evening. I'd like to ask everyone to rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Since our last county commission meeting... Thank you. Since our last county commission meeting, our community has experienced the tragic loss of life of young schoolchildren in automobile accidents and the loss of life of a beloved public schoolteacher who touched the lives of hundreds of kids and their families. We have also seen the devastation of Puerto Rico, home to 3.4 million Americans, from the most violent hurricane to hit that part of the world in 100 years. Our country has also experienced the most deadly mass shooting in our history in Nevada, with at least 59 people killed and 500 wounded. Before we begin our meeting this evening, let us have a moment of silence for reflection or silent prayer for the lives that were cut short here in our own community and in our country and for how we can support one another in our local community and in our nation. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you, and thank you all for being with us this evening. I would like to read the ethics reminder to the board. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, and to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties; to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing Board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which would have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any Board member? Also, does any Board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the Board today? There being none, all Board members have a duty and obligation to vote on each item that the Commission will be voting on this evening. All right, we now come to the public comment section of our meeting. Let me just recite our policies on this. The time limit for individual comment to the Board is three minutes. If your time expires, you can leave any question along with your name, address, and phone number with the county manager. Board members are not expected to comment during the public comment period. This is your time to speak to the Board, and the Board reserves the right to deny public access on any subject that's been previously presented to the Board during the same meeting. So if you speak on any of the agenda items that we'll be considering tonight during the initial public comment, you won't be allowed to speak again during the later public comment. All right, are there any folks who would like to address the Board at this time? Yes, sir, you can go first, and then you can go second. And please share with us your name and where you live.
Yes, Commissioner, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Tom Weincom. I've been a property owner in Buncombe County in Asheville since 1986. And since I don't have much time, I'll state that I'm here to express grave concern about the effects of a proposed development that's proposed for the county. And my property is at Three Overlook Circle in South Asheville. I'm within the city limits, but the proposed development would be within the county. There's a wet stream that flows through that rural wooded area now. It flows through my neighbor, on top of my neighbor's property, and flows underneath my backyard. When we had a real bad rainfall a year or so ago, that water just flooded my property. If there, as proposed, there are multiple housing units with roofs and driveways and streets, this wet stream, my fear is, will become a torrent that cannot go under my property and would create ruin and havoc on my property. So that's my concern. I just, this is premature, I know, it hasn't been down to details, but I just want to let you know that I, as one property owner, would be concerned. I think there are others that might be affected as well. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
And where can I give my name and...
We've read it into the minutes, so we have it now. Thank you, you just need to, that's right, you're fine, you just need to verbally share that information. Thanks.
Well, that's two of us. I'm going to speak on the same topic. My name's Carter Webb. I guess you'll notify me when the minutes, or whatever. I live in Oak Forest, and Oak Forest is directly across from the same project that he was speaking about. It's directly across from Overlook and the property, the project known as Overlook Point. On October 16 at 9:30 in the morning, Buncombe County Planning Board will hold a preliminary plan approval for Nolan Franz on behalf of Paul Hoist for the development of a major subdivision of 98 lots. Like I said, I live on West Ridge Drive, and my concern has to do with how this development will affect my neighborhood. I'm also the president of the Oak Forest Property Owners Association. Proposal is for one of the entrances and exits to this new development to be lined up with West Ridge Drive where I live. And I spoke about this last month, but want to make sure it's still on your radar. West Ridge Drive runs from Overlook Road on the north to Springside Drive on the south. With the increase in traffic on Overlook Road, it's very likely people will use our street as a cut-through from and to Springside Drive, more than it's currently being used as a cut-through street. Additionally, it's my understanding that the developer plans for the construction of these 98 homes to take five years to complete the entire, all the units. So we're looking at construction traffic for five years. So I ask you to consider looking, keeping that on your radar. Thanks.
Thank you. Jerry Rice, and anybody want to go after Jerry? All right, and you can be next. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Jerry Rice from Canlinetown. I'm glad you clarified the public comment, so we can talk what we want to talk up here on public comment, if you like it or if you don't. I'm concerned about the Inca ball fields. And you commissioners, most of you don't know, and some you do, but the Inca ball fields are put on a 90-acre tract, 40-some acres, 44 acres is on a landfill, and a bad one at that, contaminated, worst of any kind. And then you got another acreage down by the creek that was filled in, and while it was being filled in, I come to the County Board of Commissioners and explained that they were filling it in, and even today, I haven't got an answer. And this went on and hit the buildup down there, about, looked like about 14 feet or better from the basin of the creek, and that's in the floodway as well. And this, if they was to come a flood like it did in 77, it's going to wash out the field over in the soccer complex. You're going to have a devastation over there. This is something that I don't understand, is why this Board, and I'll say this Board, but its previous Board, why no one is taking a look at what I'm talking about. You can't build up 20 acres of land and expect to be the same when it comes a flood again. And I guess money talks and BS walks, because that's exactly what's happened. These millionaires out there, it's opened this thing up. It's pitiful. Money can buy anything. Health, safety, and welfare should be the responsibility of this Board, and I don't understand why you're letting this go on, even down on what we call the good land in the floodway, why it was built up 14 feet. And why this Board don't talk about it here. I don't understand it. So I'm concerned that we put $1.3 million into it. We have a lot better use than that for our money. And if you think it's less contaminated because you donated, you better think again. And I hope the future of our kids don't have any problems, but we've got more problems than you can shake a stick out there in the Inca district on this ball field site. And I don't know why people are zipping their lip, but one day you might have to unzip it when the, when bad things start happening. So I'm just trying to forewarn you, we've got plenty to talk about.
Thank you.
I live in the Fairview area. I'm going to continue on the topic Jerry Rice started. The Inca ball fields are on your consent agenda. You're closing out your donation of $1.3 million to this project for youth ball fields. If my understanding is correct, the money came from the sale of a building that those same people, the Inca partners, donated to the county. You turned around and acted as the broker, sold the building, gave the money to, back to these people who had formed a so-called nonprofit, the Inca Youth Softball Organization, for them to use for this, converting the landfill into ball fields for children. I gave Ms. Hughes a copy of the letter from the Southern Environmental Law Center, which you've all seen, and I want to detail what's in that letter. What makes the BAS, American Inca Brownfield, so dangerous, this landfill? The EPA has documented that 30 tons of coal ash were dumped daily into the unlined 41-acre landfill, beginning in 1929. The American Inca power plant used 250 tons of coal each day to supply residential and industrial electricity for the area. Coal ash contains concentrated amounts of uranium and thorium, which are radioactive. Coal ash also contains concentrated amounts of heavy metals such as lead, mercury, arsenic, cadmium, chromium, and selenium, which are hazardous and carcinogenic to human health and to wildlife. Not only does that landfill contain coal ash, but it contains toxic chemicals used in the production of nylon and rayon. These were also dumped in the landfill since 1929 until its closure in 2006. In 2006, carbon disulfide levels exceeded state soil standards by 3,700%, causing an explosion and fire. It self-combusted when it was exposed to air. Deed restrictions on this land prohibit schools, daycares, playgrounds, which are ball fields, and water wells on the property. So I'm not here to condemn past actions, but I'm here to question them, and I hope the new Board members will question these past actions, how this all transpired. I hope you'll go back and look at the minutes of the meetings. And Mountain True was involved in this, as well as the Southern Environmental Law Center and citizens like Jerry Rice and myself, because of our concern for the citizens of Buncombe and our children. So I hope you will do your due diligence. This is on the consent agenda to close out, but that doesn't mean that you can't question these actions and do adequate testing now and remediation. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Kermit, come on up, and then you can go next.
Good afternoon. My name's Kermit Tully. For those that don't know me, I'm the chief with the Medic here in Buncombe County. First, I want to thank you guys, and I want to recognize Mr. V. Hahn and Sheriff Duncan, who's here in the audience tonight, for your service to our community. That also includes our county manager, Ms. Stone, who's been wonderful. We've had some good conversations. Today, I want to give you an update on the progress of our franchise proposal. Two months ago, I met with Ms. Stone as we're pursuing our franchise in Buncombe County. We confirmed that all of our required paperwork was in order, and it was turned in, as we had been asked to do by the previous county manager. So all of that is complete, and you have it in hand. I feel that we had a very productive conversation, but that was two months ago. We've not seen any action yet. Four years ago, we had formally responded to any type of call in Buncombe County. Four years ago, that was taken away, and we respond only into the city of Asheville now, as far as emergency responses. We'd really like to get back to our response in Buncombe County, as we have been doing before. We've been here for 30 years. We have a very large amount of equipment and some of the best parabens around. This is really tough for me to be up here, because my business is suffering, suffering very bad, and that equates to our community's suffering as well. There's a lot of calls that go on in this county, and Jerry addresses those the best he can, but we're overwhelmed, and we need to be in a position to help you guys. We need to get our new radio system established. It's new to everybody in Buncombe County. We're still operating on the old system that's scheduled to go away in less than a year. So we need that authorization. We want this situation to be a win-win for our county, our citizens, our employees, and for our department. We hold contracts with a few local entities that have helped us to maintain a minimal amount of staff. We have some former employees who call us quite frequently that want their jobs back. We need to get put in a position to give them their jobs back. We provide long-lasting jobs, and we really want to work with you guys. We just need to see some progress, and I appreciate you, and I hope to hear from you soon.
Thank you.
Leslie Culby, I live in Candler. I just had a question. I really liked the way in the staff reports that the Human Resources went about posting information. They did the, they told us why, they gave us the old draft and the new draft, and I really appreciated that. But on the item before that, on the agenda where you're talking about the internal audit, I didn't see, you know, it's like, what's the purpose? What are we trying to solve? I saw a lot of big government words. I couldn't really get my mind around what we're supposed to be solving with this, and I had the same issue with the AB Tech. You know, it's like, well, didn't you have a memorandum of understanding before that? I'm just wondering if, I know you don't have to answer me, but if during the course of the meeting, you could just give us some background and tell us why we're doing those two things, I'd appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else? Yes, sir. And does anyone else want to speak after this gentleman? All right, you'll be our last speaker in public comment.
Good evening. My name's Stephen Campbell. I live in the Fairview area, have for 40 years. Worked for Buncombe County EMS for 11 in the 80s and early 90s, and I'm here tonight in support of the Medic franchise. I've known those people for 30 years, and they're good people, and they provide a valuable service to their community and do it very, do it with excellence. Now, I can't get into anything else about it, but I just want you to know that I'm in support of them, and I think that they're necessary in our county. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, yes, sir.
My name is Amos Johnson. I'm in support of the Medic. Back in 2010, my daughter Ashley, she was 16 years old, she had an accident on Long Show's Road. It was a fatal accident. Kermit Tully, he just happened to be in the area, and he went, he was a first responder. And if it wasn't for him showing up when he did, I wouldn't have got closure with my daughter. He revived her long enough for me to get to the hospital and see her before she passed away. I mean, it's kind of a, you know, a no-brainer here. Whoever's closest to the accident scene, that's who should respond. I mean, you know, county or city. I mean, it don't have to be the Medic, it could be Skyland, anybody. Whoever the closest should be able to respond to that accident. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to keep going. Yes, sir, you can go, and then you can go next.
Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission, Madam Manager, I'm a foreigner to Buncombe County. I live over in Haywood County, so please don't toss me out yet. I'm here in support of Medic. I have watched this organization grow, and I am one who appreciates the fact that you have a very professional organization such as this out here to provide services to the citizens not only of Asheville, but I hope Buncombe County. So I hope that you will see fit to allow them to operate in Buncombe County, to continue to provide the very high level of service that they have been doing. I'm not a Medic myself, I'm not, I have no financial interest in Medic. I'm just here in support of them, because I know a lot of the members of the group, and I feel very, very confident that you would be proud to have them serving the people of Buncombe County. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commission Chairman, Ms. Stone, thank you so much for the time. I just want to reiterate everything that everybody said. We've been here 30 years. Actually, it's about 32 now. So we've been here for a long time, and we want to continue what we're doing. We love the people of Buncombe County. I told you, my husband was an employee of Buncombe County for 30 years. He retired, and we lost him 11 years ago, but he put his life and energy all into Medic, and we need to keep that legacy going. My children are keeping that going now, and I know they'll do well for you. We would like to invite each and every one of you, at no cost to the county at all, to come out to Medic, to view what we have. I don't know that any of you have ever been out there. We would love to invite you, we'd love to show off what we've got. We've built it from day one, our own strength, our own money, and we work hard to make you proud and us proud. But we'd like to request to be on the upcoming agenda. I know that's maybe out of line, but we need to be here. We need to be here so that you can decide if we can do county calls as well as city calls. We did, we did for a long, long time, and then suddenly it stopped for no reason. But we love the people, and the people is what we're here for. So we need to reiterate that it needs to be the closest ambulance, the closest, be it whoever it is, Medic or whoever. We work alongside, I love Buncombe County, so I know all the people there. I trained at AB Tech, so I know most of them, and they're good guys. We don't have a bad guy in the house. So you can see our support, and we appreciate everything you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, thank you all again for being here. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Before we vote on that, Commissioner Belcher requested a short update on the Inca ball field item, so John, can you do that for us?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the fields are graded. In fact, the outfield's are not seeded, they should be seeded any day. The infield's are going to be synthetic turf. The parking lots are graded, they've got some stone on them. Irrigation systems in, the dugouts are designed, that construction will start next. Bottom line, if the weather holds, the project will be finished by the end of the year, and they anticipate having their first major tournament in July of next year. So the project's moved along. Our $1.3 million has been spent, and that's why we're asking for a closeout tonight on the capital project.
So there's been, I'm on, there's been comments regarding the elevation changes on one of the ball fields. My understanding is that was required to meet the state and federal requirements for that, because it was a brown field.
It is a brown field, and obviously there is a cap on that, on that old landfill. And like I say, it has been signed off on, state has signed that off, and it's been built per the design.
And it was challenged by, I think there was a lawsuit, and so that went on for probably a year, which is fine, to make sure, because that's the intent of, you know, no one wants anyone out there that, you know, harmful environment.
Could I just comment on that? And also, I'll comment, but it's really a question, confirm that this is accurate. So my understanding is that, because I think the environmental concerns that were raised are very legitimate issues, there have been a lot of things that have happened out in that area that have resulted in some contamination issues over many years. So my understanding is that Mountain True and the Southern Environmental Law Center, who Ms. Baldwin quoted from some of the comments they made raising concerns, that they reached an agreement with the state, and that they had, those parties, those environmental organizations have reached agreement on the proposed plans for the site. Is that correct, Mr. Cradie?
It is correct.
Thank you.
So can you say that again?
So the concerns that were raised by the Southern Environmental Law Center on behalf of their client, Mountain True, and some of the comments were read into the record. Those parties who expressed those concerns worked with the state to address them, and they have signed off on the plans. and they have, uh, signed off on the, the plans for the property, for the ball fields.
So, they were good with it?
Yes.
So, I also wanted to, to make sure that everyone knew that there was two million dollars that come from the, uh, Tourism Board as a, as a grant, which at that time, I don't, I don't think it is now, was the largest grant that they had issued, you know, and for it to go to the, you know, to the western part of the county for the, uh, children and other, I mean, th, this is gonna have a major economic impact on that, on that community. And, um, I'm glad that we're, uh, closing it off and paying for it and look forward to, uh, to seeing the results of it in the years to come, so.
Will Kevin Costner be coming?
Kevin Costner? I have not invited him, have you?
I thought, I left that to you.
Oh, okay.
If you build the fields.
Oh, okay, it's, oh. Yeah, Mike's in charge of the, no, no, Robert Presley's in charge of the celebrity, so Robert, you'll have to take care of that for us, okay? Thank you. That's all I was looking for, appreciate it.
And, um, Mister Creighton, while we got you up there, um, there was also a question from, um, uh, one of the folks who commented about the AB Tech, uh, item. Would you just briefly, could you just briefly, or who, who's the best person to, uh, Mister Frue, yeah, okay, that'd be great. Someone could just share, um, maybe a, just a few, uh, a little bit of information kind of explaining the purpose of, uh, the memorandum of understanding.
Yes, sir, Mister Chairman, Commissioners, as you recall, back in two thousand and eleven, uh, the voters approved the quarter cent sales tax and that was primarily used for the allied health building construction. And there was a memorandum of understanding in place at that time. Now, we've sort of come full circle. We have maintenance issues and this board has tasked Greg Israel to go out there and work with the college to make about a million and a half dollars' worth of maintenance and repair items as a checklist. I've worked with Chris Campbell, the college attorney, uh, to make sure that he agrees with me that, uh, the session law that was placed, put in place by the General Assembly, uh, six or seven years ago, which would allow for that construction, is still in place. It does not sunset until the end of two thousand and eighteen. So, as long as it's, the funding comes from the same source, we felt it prudent to do a new MOU to make sure everybody knew that it was, for these purposes, is authorized by the statute, uh, to continue that maintenance and, uh, do that maintenance without the office of state personnel. Saves time, saves money.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, sir. All right, um, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda and follow the remainder of the agenda?
So, moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, um, the next item on the agenda, uh, is the Certificate of Appreciation to the Ark of Buncombe County for sixty years of service. And I believe Linda McDaniel is here this evening. And if there's anybody else, uh, from the Ark who's here as well, uh, please feel free to join Commissioner Whitesides up at the podium and he will present the certificate.
My fellow Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, it's a privilege for me to honor one of the organizations in the county nonprofits that's been near to, endeared to me for a number of years now. As a matter of fact, I'm still a member of their board. Uh, and we will celebrate this Friday night at the Event Center, our sixtieth anniversary. And I'd like to invite all of you to join us there at six o'clock. And I remember the time, see? And I forgot to bring your checks that I've collected too. I'll give them to you tomorrow. And this reads, Buncombe County Commissioners express their appreciation to the Ark of Buncombe County for sixty years of dedicated work to empower people with intellectual and other developmental disabilities to reach their highest potential. Your work on behalf of our citizens has improved the quality of life for our community and made Buncombe County a better place to live, work, and play. This, the third day of October two thousand and seventeen, Brownie Newman, Chairman, and it's signed by all the other six county commissioners. Thank you. Would you like to say something?
Thank you.
I have to say something. I'd like to thank the county commissioners and everyone for all their support through these sixty years. Uh, sometimes we feel like we're back where they started from because times are hard and funds have been cut and we still have people on our door. But we thank you, each and everyone, and we thank Jer Rice for what he does for our people. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your great work. All right, and the next, uh, item is a proclamation of Domestic Violence Prevention Month. And Commissioner Ellen Frost will present the proclamation and Julie Clip Nicholson will, will receive it.
I can't imagine the isolation and terror it must be like to be a victim of domestic violence, whether a child, whether a senior, man, woman. And it's still significant in Buncombe County, but I feel with these heroes right here, Captain Smart, Julie Clip Nicholson, Sheriff Duncan, April Burgess, we have made it an indent so that people, they don't have to feel isolated when they see the Family Justice Center. And I hope anybody watching this or hears this knows that these folks have their back. So, it will be a great day when we don't have to designate a month like this. But we're not there yet. But I feel like these are heroes in our community and we are moving forward. So, the County of Buncombe proclamation of Domestic Violence Prevention Month. Whereas, domestic violence is a serious crime that affects Buncombe County citizens of all races, ages, genders, and income levels. And whereas, domestic violence caused Buncombe County taxpayers millions of dollars annually in law enforcement, court costs, shelter, foster care, and medical expenses. And whereas, children who grow up in witnessing domestic violence in their homes are deeply impacted and are more likely to have trouble in school, more likely to perpetrate violence themselves, and more likely to experience long-term mental and physical health challenges. And whereas, Buncombe County is committed to preventing domestic violence and has implemented a coordinated community response partnering with community organizations, Buncombe County Sheriff's Department, Buncombe County Health and Human Services, the District Attorney's Office, Asheville Police Department, Mission Hospital, HelpMate, Our Voice, Piscile Legal Services, and other agencies who are working toward a community free from domestic violence. And whereas, Buncombe County is committed to supporting the safety of domestic violence victims and has opened the Fa, Buncombe County Family Justice Center where survivors can access coordinated support from different partners, agencies, including law enforcement, nonprofit services, providers, and healthcare services. And whereas, Domestic Violence Prevention Month is an opportunity to stand with domestic violence survivors to celebrate the progress we have made in combating these crimes and to recommit to preventing domestic violence in Buncombe County. Now that therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of Buncombe County Commissioners as follows. One, that the month of October two thousand and sev- seventeen be proclaimed Domestic Violence Prevention Month in Buncombe County. Two, that this board does hereby urge all citizens to make a commitment to stop domestic violence by speaking out against violence and learning more about the resources available to survivors and their families. Does anybody want to say anything?
We'll get a chance to speak more during the County Manager's Report. Do you want to share about the vigil?
Sure. We'd just like to invite you all to join us tomorrow evening, uh, once per year, uh, HelpMate leads a vigil to, um, recognize the losses that our state has experienced over the past year, uh, in terms of victims who have died because of domestic violence. Uh, and to come together and recommit ourselves as a community to continuing the vital work, uh, to address this important issue. So, tomorrow at five thirty in the Cheryl Center at UNCA, we would love to have you join us. Thank you for your support.
Great, thank you all for being with us and for all the work you do to address this important concern in our community. And, um, the next item on the agenda is, um, is an update on the Family Justice Center. So, uh, we'll just move on, right on into that. So, Julie Clip Nicholson is here to provide an update for us. Uh, Julie, thanks for being here and, um, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Chairman Newman and Commissioners, thank you very much for making time this evening to hear about the work that's happening at the Family Justice Center this year. On July first, twenty sixteen, the partner agencies began providing coordinated services at the Family Justice Center. Now, survivors of domestic and sexual violence can access counseling, civil legal services, safety planning, emergency medical services, and criminal justice support from agencies at the Family Justice Center. In our community, before the Family Justice Center, a survivor of domestic and sexual violence had to go to eight different locations to access all of those services. And now, she goes to one. As the, uh, coordinated community response and the partners of the Family Justice Center, our mission is building a resilient community free from domestic and sexual violence. And we do that by integrating existing community resources, increasing victim's safety, holding offenders accountable, and engaging the community. Those are our objectives and we have accomplished those objectives this year. When we opened our door in July, uh, twenty sixteen through June, twenty seventeen, fiscal year seven, uh, fiscal year seventeen, uh, we've provided four hundred and seventeen integrated intakes at the Family Justice Center. That is when a survivor walks through our door for the first time, is met with an intake specialist who can help assess her needs and get her connected to the additional service providers that can help create safety for her. Fifty-one percent of those intakes accessed more than one service provider in their first visit. What we've learned this year is that sometimes people who have experienced trauma want to find out about the resources available. They want to hear about their options before they take the next steps. And that is available at the Family Justice Center as well. Thanks to our partners at Mission Health, eighty-four clients have been able to access sexual assault medical exams and other clinical services at our forensic medical exam clinic onsite at the Family Justice Center. So, they have not had to go to the emergency department. Eighty-four percent of the people seeking those, that integrated intake service identified domestic violence as the primary victimization that they've experienced. Twelve percent identified sexual assault or stalking as the primary victimization that they were seeking services for. As of the first quarter of this year, we've seen a fifty percent increase in the number of intakes that have walked through our doors. So, our outreach and services are working in the community and people are hearing through word of mouth coming to seek services. Our goal to increase victim's safety is being met. Ninety-two percent of victims that met with an integrated intake specialist at the Family Justice Center walked away with a plan to keep themselves safe and they knew what to do if they were in danger. And seventy-one percent reported feeling a decreased fear and anxiety level. When asked what the most helpful experience, part of their experience at the Family Justice Center was, we've heard comments like, getting the help and resource that I needed, everybody making me feel comfortable, being able to talk to all of the different agencies in one stop, and I could talk to the police without being scared. We are holding offenders accountable. Our law enforcement partners have made the crimes of domestic and sexual violence a priority. In FY seventeen, five hundred and sixty-eight people were arrested for intimate partner domestic violence crimes and fifty-nine people were arrested for sexual assault crimes. The services at the Family Justice Center are designed for survivors, but Buncombe County has partnered with the Spark Foundation to provide an array of services for people who are using violence in their relationship. In FY seventeen, we had fifty people who successfully completed the Batters Intervention Program through the Spark Foundation, learning a new way to be in relationship. The work of the Family Justice Center partners is done under the incredible leadership of, uh, our Sheriff Van Duncan, our HelpMate's, uh, Executive Director, April Burgess Johnson. I'd love to invite them up to share about their experience, their services.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Uh, when I think back to the start of the Family Justice Center, I think back to those conversations and those long hours sitting around the table with all the partners, discussing how we were gonna work through all our different policies and things to bring about a more just outcome for our survivors of domestic violence. And when you look in the dictionary for justice, equitable, moral, righteousness, those words are used. And what I can tell you is this group has been in pursuit of justice since those early days. Uh, even though we have been doing very well and the numbers reflect that, a lot of times, justice can't be reflected in numbers. What I would say is, is that the survivors and, and victims of sexual violence that come to the Family Justice Center, I think, leave with that sense of their voice being heard, justice being served. And even though we're, we're being very successful with those things, we continue to look at ways that we can assess ourselves. We're looking at a lethality case review amongst our partners. And we need some legislative help with that and that's, that should be coming and on the way. And that's gonna allow us to sit down and look at cases where, where a death occurred in, in these horrific instances. And we can sit down in not a blameful way, but a blameless way of saying, how can we do better? How can we serve better? So, I'm very proud to be part of this, uh, along with the partners. April.
First, I just want to reiterate, um, how incredibly privileged I feel to live and work in Buncombe County. Uh, ending domestic violence has been my life's work. Uh, and I've never been more excited about it than I am at this moment in this place. And a lot of that has to do with the extraordinary leadership this commission and County Manager Stone, uh, have shown in supporting initiatives to make sure that we're continuously improving our community's response to domestic violence. Uh, HelpMate's been honored to be a part of that. Um, we've served Buncombe County and survivors here for nearly forty years. Uh, and all of our services are free to the community and completely confidential. Uh, we served more than twenty-five hundred survivors, um, in one year alone last year. Uh, and we provided education services to five thousand people in Buncombe County, including, uh, school-aged children so that we can teach them about the importance of safe and healthy relationships. Talking about the impact of, um, HelpMate services and this community partnership that we have a, around addressing domestic violence, I think is best told um, through the lens of the families that experience it. So, I want to tell you about Sandra. Um, Sandra was a woman who was in an abusive relationship that spanned nearly two decades. She had an eleven-year-old daughter who was the light of her world. And her husband was continuously controlling of her. He wasn't always physically violent, although sometimes he was. But the hardest thing for her was the constant emotional abuse that she experienced, the put-downs, uh, that he took all of the family's money, that he controlled where she went, who she talked to, and how long she got to stay there. Um, one night, while her, her child was away at a sleepover, um, her husband again became violent, he drug her through the house. And a neighbor overheard her screaming and called law enforcement. Law enforcement came out, they used their lethality assessment protocol and they talked to her about the danger that she was in. They said it was a real, a, a light bulb went off for her about, um, what this, what this relationship was doing to her and how it was impacting her health and that she really could die, um, if, if he continued to escalate his, his behavior. The next day, when the child came back home, um, they were sitting down at lunch and having a conversation and the child wanted to participate in something in school. And, um, the, the dad looked at her and said, you know, you're just like your mom. He says, you wreck it, the mom said, you- The mom said, I've recognized that look, and it scared me. And that was the moment she decided to leave. And so that Monday, she came to the Family Justice Center. She walked in scared to death. She sat down with one of our intake folks. She made a plan. That plan included coming into Helpmates Emergency Shelter with her daughter and beginning to create a new life, getting a job, getting a car, getting transportation. And she was really scared about how that separation would impact her daughter. And so I want to read you all something, something that was written on a whiteboard in the kitchen of Helpmates Emergency Shelter. It says, "We are the women of the world. We're the ones who change it. We are here because each of us stood up. We changed the world because of what we did. And if you ever feel like giving up, look back at what you did. You're the one who made a difference." That wasn't the mom, that was the eleven-year-old daughter. Your work is inspiring hope every day. You're preserving the future of our children, and I'm incredibly grateful for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
As we continue our work of engaging our community around preventing domestic and sexual violence, we are excited to unveil the Still Standing Project. Survivors of domestic and sexual violence are sharing their stories of hope and courage in an effort to support survivors who are currently experiencing domestic violence in coming forward. And tonight, I want to share with you one of our first videos in the Still Standing Project.
He was smart, charismatic, and funny. He was creative and talented. We had a ton of things in common. It was like having an instant family. The first incident of violence happened about two months after we began dating. He began acting strange, erratic, angry, confused. He threw me into a desk and held me at an ice point. It took twenty officers to arrest him. I felt like it was my fault. He said everything that made me believe that he could change. I loved him so much. I thought that things would get better. I mistook his control for love and his possessiveness for caring. He kept me off of my family. He pushed me out of a moving car, beat me with a baseball bat, left me in the basement for days at a time. I had no other option, I had no escape. Finally, he was put into jail for ninety days, and I thought that would be my chance to get free. I fled my home in the middle of the night. My name is Sarah, and I'm still standing. I called Helpmate. They brought me in and gave me counseling, education, support group. It was the first sense of freedom and safety I had in years. I continue to work with them and the Family Justice Center as a survivor, so that my story can make a difference, and I can advocate for something that I didn't have myself. I am Sarah, and I'm still standing.
You will be able to find Sarah's story along with other survivors' stories on life-size silhouettes in community buildings throughout Buncombe County for the next several months. If you come across one, I encourage you to read the story and experience the survivor's hope and courage. So what's next for the Family Justice Center? We are partnering with statewide organizations to provide training and support for other communities who have been inspired by this work and want to create family justice centers in their community. As Sheriff Duncan mentioned, we have our Domestic Violence Fatality Review Bill pending that will hopefully move forward in the Senate in the short session, giving us the opportunity to come together as a multidisciplinary team, identify systems gaps, and work to improve them. We've also been working on building shared data dashboards so that we're better able to identify trends and coordinate across disciplines, and we continue to engage the community in preventing domestic and sexual violence. If you or someone you know has experienced domestic or sexual violence, the Family Justice Center is located at 35 Woodfin Street. We are open Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, and we welcome walk-ins. There's more information available at buncom county dot org backslash FJC. Thank you for your support of this work.
Thank you very much.
So I've just got a comment before you leave. One of the statistics you had showed fifty-one percent of the people were able to meet with a person and find help on the first visit. Was that correct?
So all of the people that walked through the door are able to meet with an intake specialist who works with either Helpmate or Our Voice and talk through what their options are, create a safety plan. Fifty-one percent of those folks chose to meet with an additional organization as well. That may be law enforcement or Episcopal legal services. So fifty-one percent got connected with more than one.
And that's on the first visit?
That's on the first visit.
So the reason I'm bringing that up is that, you know, what you're trying to do is to keep stress from becoming toxic stress, right? And before, it was as many as twenty-one times that they met with twenty-one different people or went to twenty-one, you know, eight different places and twenty-one different people or something like that, right?
That's it, eight different places and twenty-one different people.
So my number's right. Well, that's, I have to tell my wife that my memory is better than she thinks it is. But that's fantastic, you know, for people to come in there in one place. And it may not mean something to those that don't use it, but for those that use it, it's life-changing, worth the investment. So thank you for the update.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Julie and April and Sheriff Duncan. Thank you all for being with us this evening and for your great work to address this important concern in the community. All right. The next item on our agenda is the Audit Committee Recommendations. And so Larry Harris, the Audit Committee Chair, and Terry Orange, Internal Auditor, will present this item, and they're asking for three actions this evening. Adoption of the new charter, appointment of a second county commissioner to serve on the Audit Committee, and adoption of internal control integrated framework. Mr. Harris, great to see you. Thank you for being with us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, thank you. Good to be with you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I wanted to offer just a brief introduction, and Terry's really going to do the work of detailing out the recommendations that are coming from the Audit Committee. These recommendations were presented to the Audit Committee, instigated, initiated by County Manager Stone and Internal Auditor Terry Orange to bring. The objective is to create a space for the internal auditor and perhaps internal audit staff in the future to do the work that they should be doing. In order to create that space, a couple of things have to happen, and that is that the reporting structure for the internal auditor has to change. The internal auditor or and/or her staff, his or her staff, can't report to management because that sort of defeats the purpose of internal audit. And so you create this space where they can do their work somewhat or maybe perhaps completely independent of management, and that creates another problem, and that is then who does the internal auditor and/or staff go to for regular oversight of the internal audit operations? That's the reason that another commissioner needs to join, or we believe needs to join, the Audit Committee. So those two things together are really the, you know, really the crux of the matter, and these changes, you know, they're pretty significant. And as you might gather, potentially is going to take some time for two commissioners. I know you're already busy. But also a good bit more time for a volunteer audit committee made up of folks that I believe, Commissioner Whitesides. I think everyone is in either industry or public accounting or banking, that sort of thing. So you have working folks, and you also have commissioners that you're bringing on. It's going to be a fairly busy chore, a little bit busier than the Audit Committee has had in the past. And you also have to have that space, if there is a red flag, for internal audit to go and to have a place to process that. That's another reason for adding the commissioners, because coming to the entire commission would be awkward, to say the least, with that sort of thing. So with that, I'll turn it over to Internal Auditor Terry Orange to kind of detail out the recommendations.
Larry, before you turn it over to her, I'd like to make a comment too, being on the Audit Committee and coming from a different environment in banking. The lady asked a question earlier of why we're doing this. What's happening today is that governmental organizations, municipal or county governments, are beginning to catch up where we were in banking ten, fifteen years ago. And that's all we're doing, is updating, we're coming to where we should be. And in the past, when it was only one commissioner on the Audit Committee, we only had five commissioners. Today, we have seven, and we need two on there. But it's just updating it, and like everything else, we're evolving. And I think now we're catching up to where we're coming from banking where I'd say we should have been for some time now.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Harris, Chairman Newman, Commissioners, I'm Terry Orange, Internal Auditor for Buncombe County since March of this year. And I do want to talk to you about a little more detail about the recommendations coming from the Audit Committee and also some other changes that we have made in internal control. To give you a little bit of context, and Commissioner Whitesides already has to some extent, what we are doing is with the change in management, there have been lots of reevaluations of structure and process and what are we about as a county, and do our structures currently service as they are organized, and what adjustments do we need to make? And you'll hear more about adjustments later in the meeting today when we get to the personnel ordinance. So internal control, not something that everyone is familiar with, so we'll talk a little bit about what is it really? And it's, you know, all about what are our objectives as an organization and within each department? What do we want to achieve? What might get in the way? What are the risks that we face? And then the internal controls are how can we manage the risks that are manageable? There may be some external risks to our plans that we may not have control over, but let's manage the ones we can manage internally. So here is a list of the internal control structural adjustments we've made. Well, some of them we've already made, some of them we're asking for your help tonight. And so the top three on the list have been completed. Repositioning the internal audit function. County Manager Stone has done that when she restructured the organization and made a number of changes. And one thing that she has done is made internal audit more independent. Adopting the internal audit charter. The Audit Committee is responsible for that and has adopted it. And then adopting the Audit Committee bylaws, there again, the Audit Committee adopted their own bylaws. Now, the recommendations for you for tonight are amending the resolution, creating the Audit Committee, and the Audit Committee Charter. Those are basically both being amended for the same reason, which we'll go over in just a moment. And then adopting the COSO Internal Control Integrated Framework. So amending the Audit Committee Charter and Resolution. Why is the Audit Committee requesting this? The principal changes are we're restructuring just a little bit the Audit Committee, as Mr. Harris already referred to. In the past, we have only had one commissioner, and we have also had a member of management on the committee. But since the committee is basically an arm of you, an oversight body, we would like to remove the member of management from the committee and replace it with another commissioner. And then also, we would like for the committee to provide additional oversight of internal audit, since it is becoming more independent of management. You still need that oversight, and the Audit Committee can perform that function. So then our next recommendation coming out of Audit Committee is adopting the COSO Internal Control Integrated Framework. This is basically something that the county has been moving toward for some time, but I think we feel finally ready now to take that final step into adoption of it. And that starts with you, if you so choose. And it's something that is highly recommended. It's a widely accepted internal control framework for all kinds of organizations, and the Government Finance Officers Association considers it a best practice for governmental bodies to adopt. So just to give you a brief overview of the framework, there are five things, principles, things that you need in internal control, and you have to have all five of these things present and also functioning. So you have to have a good control environment. That's the foundation of everything, and you choosing to adopt this would be sending your message as part of the control environment that this is important to us. Then, once you have a control environment, the organization and each department will do risk assessments, looking at what do we need to accomplish in this department, and what are the risks that might get in the way? And then let's develop some control activities to help us mitigate those risks as much as possible. And then we have to monitor those controls once they're in place and continually assess, are they working? And of course, throughout the whole thing, communication and information are crucial. None of it will work without it. So if you choose to take this step and adopt this framework on behalf of the county, there will be some implementation steps. It will take time. We will be coming back to you with plans for this. It would, you know, include some more detailed information for you and for all employees on internal control and this framework, and the fact that we really rely on the employees and management to implement all of this. So in summary, the recommendations from the Audit Committee to you is that we amend the resolution, creating the Audit Committee and the Charter. Both of these are for restructuring the Audit Committee and for providing more oversight for internal audit and more independence. And then adopting on behalf of Buncombe County the COSO Internal Control Integrated Framework.
Great, thank you very much. Are there any questions from the board at this time?
I'll just make one suggestion, that we add Commissioner Robert Presley to the Audit Committee.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, after we vote on it.
Sure, okay.
Mr. Chairman, just one point of order. The draft resolution that's in the agenda packet, just to clarify, we would ask on behalf of the Internal Auditor and the Audit Committee that it include that the changes to the committee structure be included and that the COSO Internal Control Integrated Framework be added to the resolution to formalize that.
Okay. Is there any objection to adding that to the resolution?
Do you need a motion?
Yeah, we'll have, first, let's have a motion on the resolution granting the Audit Committee additional responsibilities and altering its membership. We are going to vote on several other pieces, including the appointment of an additional commissioner and the charter. And once we have a motion, I will open it up to public comment. I would just ask for, if there's comments, then just speak to any of those different items related to the changes to the Audit Committee.
Second.
All right, there is a motion and a second on the resolution. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment at this time?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I don't have no degrees hanging on the wall, so don't look for them. But there's one thing I do have, that's common sense. That's the reason you need people on these boards, with common sense. When I hear the word auditor, I get concerned because it concerns about money and controls, but money primarily, and we handle a lot of it here in Buncombe. My concern is this. There's a lot of theory going on around here with Audit Committee and There's a lot of theory going on around here with Audit Committee and restructuring and everything. And to me, that says that we got trouble in paradise, right here in Buncombe County. We got a county manager under investigation, and when I hear this, it makes me want my hair to stand up because what did we miss? Where is it at? And you're looking at a man that don't want to brag about it, but I got thrown out of a Commissioner meeting for the very fact that I said figures don't lie, but liars figure. Now, I got thrown out of a meeting for saying that. Would you throw me out, Mr. Chairman? If you do, I'll be back. The other chairman's done gone that threwed me out. Now, I'm saying something for you to listen to. I might not have an education that you have, but you better listen to a canary in a coal mine because he gives his life for that, that somebody else might live. So, the red flags, you got an auditor. I'm talking about we pay thousands of dollars for. And this auditor ought to be looking at the internal controls and everything else, an overview and a transmittal letter that comes to you once a year. What are we paying thousands of dollars for if we don't have auditors worth the thousands of dollars that we're paying them? They ought to be red flagging these things. Now, this Audit Committee's been in existence for a long time. Has it been working properly? I don't know. It must not. Now, if you're going to do this audit stuff that you're structuring here, if you don't give people the power to do things and have oversight, that oversight ain't worth nothing if you don't have power to deliver it. If you're told to shut up and get back in your room, what good is it? This is a powerful committee, and they need to be doing a powerful job. But our auditors that we pay yearly thousands of dollars for, they ought to be held to another accountability level. And we got one sitting on this board, if I ain't mistaken, Mr. Yelton. Now, if these people are worth this kind of money, they ought to be throwing up red flags at the end of the year on June whatever, or April. So, I have a concern about this, big one, and I hope you do. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right. So, the first item, which we have a motion and a second on, is to approve the resolution. Are there any additional comments or questions on the resolution?
I have a comment. So, it is very common and best business practice that an internal auditor and an Audit Committee reports to a board. Of appointed boards, or an elected board, they report to an appointed board. You do not have someone from management on that committee because it can create a conflict, and this helps to avoid that. And it is, there is more accountability in this. It is more empowering to the internal auditor and to the Audit Committee to make sure that communication is proper and that we're following the right procedures in the county, and I am pleased to support it.
All right. All in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The second item is the adoption of the Charter. It's the Charter. Is that correct, Mr. Free?
Yes, sir. I guess to clarify, I was sort of leaning toward asking the Board to modify the resolution as written to enact all three of those at one time, but I guess as written, it'd be clean at this point to approve the adoption of the Charter and the COSO standard.
Okay. Let's just take them one at a time. They're all related. So, could we have a motion to approve the Audit Committee Charter?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then the third item, then we'll come back to the appointment of the Commissioner, is the adoption of the internal control, the Integrated Framework, the COSO standard, if I'm using that correctly. All right.
Can I comment?
Sure.
I just want to take a moment to sort of specifically endorse this framework, and the title of it's a great title, but also just to translate it, I think what this is about is really sending a very strong, clear message that at every level of Buncombe County government, there's a strong commitment to a framework that's about assessing risks and addressing them, and being very proactive about that, and people knowing that they're encouraged to be proactive partners in that process. So I look forward to the specific recommendations that'll come forward about how we can implement this and the types of trainings, I think perhaps starting with us, or at least including us in the early wave that will happen, and really doing everything we can as a commission to embrace and endorse and help implement an understanding and culture of this from top to bottom in the county.
And I think the more everyone can hear that this starts with us and our urge for transparency, and I thank Manager Stone for coming in and making significant changes because that is her style.
And I appreciate it. I was on the Audit Board, and standing up here and changing this in the way it is with internal auditor, I think is a great, great way to bring this forward. It's a new day in Buncombe County, people, and we all have to understand that. Ms. Stone, County Manager, has really brought something forward to help bring everything together. That's my appreciation. We'll all learn as we go along, and we learn every day. But it is a new day, so I'll be for this. Thank you.
I also had one other comment because it's been mentioned about the annual audit, which is a separate tool or mechanism. What's great about an internal audit, an internal audit department in particular, the Audit Committee's over here, but an internal auditor and that department, is it's every day, every hour. And that's why you have that department, you have that person. And so it will make it better instead of waiting annually for certain systems and things to be checked. But it'll be every day and every hour.
All right. Any other comments before we vote? All right. So this is the adoption of the COSO Integrated Framework. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And then the final item on this is the appointment of the second County Commissioner to serve on the Audit Committee. Is there a motion?
Yes. I move that Robert Presley join me on the Audit Committee as the second member.
All right. There's a motion and a second?
Third.
Yeah, you'll get it. You can just vote on it. It's okay.
Yeah, you just get to vote.
All right. Any comments or discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Terry, thank you very much, and Michael, thank you very much for walking us through that. All right. The next item on our agenda is the Early Learning Partnership, and there's going to be several folks who are going to help us with this. Commissioners Belcher and Frost and Rachel Nygaard are going to be presenting this item. So I'm not sure who's going first, but I'll just turn it over to the three of you. And Mr. Harris, thank you for being with us, and it's always good to see you.
Last week, Commissioners were fortunate enough to have a presentation of the dire need for early learning and having children ready for kindergarten. The numbers are staggering of the children that don't have it. It is overwhelming, the need that's out there. So, we can sit and be paralyzed by the need and say, how are we ever going to be able to do that? Or, we can be creative. And one of the things I'm so grateful of, this Board and senior leadership, is the creativity. Every single Commissioner on our Board pre-K is a priority, is our biggest priority. Because we know, as Judge Hill said, pre-K is the best diversion for jail. So after listening to this presentation and just doing rough calculations, I think the amount for every child in Buncombe County, it was going to be something like forty-five million dollars. Pretty staggering. But thanks to creativity, we have some solutions. Last year, Commissioner Belcher, myself, Mandy Stone, entered into some unusual conversations with at the time, a different partnership at the time. Pam Baldwin was the Chair of Asheville City Schools, Reverend Grant was at Hill Street, and they came up with a great proposal for twelve spots for pre-K. And you might say, twelve compared to what we need is insurmountable. But as Commissioner Belcher talks about starfish, you save one starfish, that one's pretty lucky. So, I'm going to let Commissioner Belcher take over, but I'm really excited about this. This time next year, there will be twelve children in pre-K, and a great situation. And I look forward to more of these partnerships throughout the county because we're not, unless we get creative and foster these partnerships, we're never going to meet our goals.
Thank you. That's very well said. This did start a while ago, at least a year ago. Yeah, I think it's been a couple of years. And it came out of a concern of a church and daycare, and that they had been working with the state and federal, and there were some concerns. So, Ms. Stone and others got involved, and the thing that I like about this is that it's the church, city, county, state, federal, there's all come together to make this happen. And, you know, one of my favorite scriptures is, "Train up a child, the way he or she will go, and when they're old, they'll not depart from it." And that's what this is about. How do we take these children that are at risk and help? And it will make a big difference to this community. This will be a huge impact in this community. And I'm glad that all of the Commissioners, you know, look to this, and we can make a difference in one community, and if you can make a difference with ten children, or a hundred children, or a thousand children, that is going to multiply. You know, there are Commissioners sitting up here that when you were a child, nobody ever thought you'd be a Commissioner, right? And we get the opportunity to sit up here and try to make a difference. But I'm excited about it, and we'll turn it over to Ms. Nygaard to let her give the details on it and for the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Rachel Nygaard, on staff here at Buncombe County, working on strategic partnerships. And one of the partnerships that I've been excited to work on with this Board over the last year is expanding access to early childhood education. The report that Commissioner Frost was referring to a minute ago can be accessed by this group and members of the public online on the Agenda page for the work session that this Board held last week on September 26th. A report that was put together by the Asheville-Buncombe Preschool Planning Collaborative about what would it look like to expand access to a high-quality preschool across Buncombe County and what kind of benefits that can create. And during that session, Chairman Newman remarked, what can we do that's bite-sized? We're all in it for this long-term strategic priority, and we want to look for ways that we can create change as we go toward that long-term vision. So, this opportunity before you is a chance to do that. It's the form of a budget amendment, which proposes providing funding in the amount of up to sixty-three thousand four hundred seventy-eight dollars to support the development of a new preschool classroom at Christine Avery Learning Center. This is, like you mentioned, a partnership with Asheville City Schools and with a faith community, and as well as drawing in revenue that the county funding can leverage to support NC pre-K. So the NC pre-K dollars matched with local funding make this classroom a possibility, and we think it can serve as an incubator model that might be able to be replicated. There's some really neat advantages to putting a classroom like this in association with the school system that can bring in technical support and expertise in connection to the school that's right nearby Christine Avery, connection to the PTO at Isaac Dixon. So there's some kind of neat and cool, creative pieces that will come out of it. But essentially, what this funding will do is allow the school to partner with that center and get the classroom open as soon as possible. They've already posted the job listing for the teacher, and they're excited to get going.
Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you very much.
All right. Perfect. Thank you, Commissioners and Rachel. Are there any initial questions from the Board at this time? All right. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment on this proposal?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. This is right down my alley, education. How about that? But we got problems. If we didn't have a problem, we wouldn't have nothing to fix, would we? My concern is that I don't see anything in this little red book that I got here on a five-year or a ten-year sustainability plan. We're flying by the seat of our pants, and I think we need to look at that sustainability of what you're doing here. Jim Hunt, if you look at what Jim Hunt done, three consecutive sessions that he had as Governor, he put multi-millions that we don't even have, and it still never flew. So here, we're starting something up that he started twelve years of his life in. I'm not saying it's not a good thing. I'm just saying, is it sustainable? And where are we going to get the money? Well, let me give you some suggestions. When Buncombe County School takes kids into school system, they come in at seven years old. And most of these kids are not going to get what you think they're going to get. So you can preschool them all you want to, but if you ain't got teachers and administrations in these school system, it's going to carry it out and further their education, you're going to start them, and then they're going to stifle them. You know what stifling means? It's going to choke them down. So now, I deal with this on a daily basis for thirty years. This ain't no new thing to me. Buncombe County and Asheville City is doing a sloppy job when it comes to educating our kids, period. Now, if we don't find the answer to fix the education piece on what we're doing right now, this preschool ain't going to do it. So let me give you some suggestions. If we're going to talk about partnerships, let's don't talk about schools. Let's talk about TDA, Chamber of Commerce, room tax. Let's figure out where to get all these multi-millions of dollars, sustainable money, that we can sustain this program that we're talking about. Let's figure out where to get this money. If these kids are going to graduate from the county school system, city school system, go in the workplace, I think the money that I'm talking about could come from these other places, somewhere or another. We could get some more money, and it ain't going to be up to the taxpayers to pay it. The people that's benefited from this is the people that have got these big factories that is hiring these people if they're hirable. Most of them ain't hirable. You got it? See if you can fix that. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else?
Commissioners, I just want to thank the county for taking this step and moving forward as a champion for children with the First Two Thousand Days Campaign. We know that initial five years of life is so essential to how our young people enter schools, with their ability to learn, their ability to learn in groups, their ability to be receptive to that group learning environment. And we've seen this as being a request and a need in our community for quite some time. So for somebody who really believes in prevention and deals a whole So for somebody who really believes in prevention and deals a whole lot with the other end of lack of prevention and trying to fix folks who have issues and are broken in some ways, to see the Commissioners move in this direction is very, very good to see for me, and I just wanted to comment on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, I'll bring it back to the Commission. The issue before the Commission is consideration of a budget amendment to fund the pre-K project that was just described to us. So someone would like to make a motion?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, it passes unanimously. Thank you all for being here tonight, and we look forward to continuing to look for opportunities to take steps forward on this important effort in the community. And just as a little bit of additional information, as I think some of the speakers said, the County Commission had a work session on this topic last week. And so this is a near-term opportunity, but we're really looking forward to other steps that can be taken in the near future as well as in the long term as well. All right, the next item on our agenda is an ordinance approving revisions to the Buncombe County Personnel Ordinance. And Mike Frue and Lisa Eby will present the changes to the personnel policy that we will be voting on this evening, and they're fairly, fairly long. So they'll walk us through this and see if there's any questions before we take up the revisions.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. As you said, I'm here tonight to talk about changes that are being recommended in the Personnel Ordinance. One of the first things Mandy did when she became County Manager was instruct me to begin initial classification and pay review, which I've begun. It's underway. And the other thing was to review our Personnel Ordinance and make sure that it was up to date. So I want to talk through these changes tonight. They've been done with the consultation of Mike Frue and Kurt Euler. And I also want to just give you a heads up that I anticipate coming back in April. We're implementing Workday at that time, our employee HR system, that's the electronic web-based platform for our new HR process, which will be infinitely better than what we have right now. We've been very handicapped by our current system, which is basically scan documents into a system, so trying to track or search through that process is very difficult. And so with that new system, it will cause additional changes in the Personnel Ordinance. That will also allow us to be much more responsive to requests around personnel records as well. So we're looking forward to that. So the, this happened the last time I did this, okay. So deja vu all over again. So there are three lenses that I wanted to look at the Personnel Ordinance, and these lenses are based on the transparency, accountability, and equity that you all as County Commissioners and the County Manager said that you wanted to use as guiding principles going forward. Toward that end, I was pleased to see that somebody noticed we posted these changes on the web. We made sure that we had the redline copy so people could follow those changes, which was a very big, thick manual if you were having trouble sleeping. We had the spreadsheet that allowed you to carefully look from the old to the new and again, be able to track those changes. And we also made sure that we're coming to you to make sure that these changes are discussed in public and so we can get public opinion. Mandy also made sure that these decisions were discussed with her senior leadership team, and again, with her agency-wide departmental heads, and all of that was done in order to ensure this transparency, accountability, and equity. I do want to talk through, before we go much further, just the difference between the Personnel Ordinance and the Budget Ordinance, because they're both there for specific reasons. The Personnel Ordinance is an adopted personnel system that clearly delineates the policies and practices that support employee relations and work conditions. And it's done that way so that you have a fair and consistent practice that's out there in public that everybody knows about and can follow. It's amended only as needed and with Board of Commisional approval. So the Personnel Ordinance is meant to be a fairly static document that stays stable so essentially employees know the rules of engagement within the work environment. The Budget Ordinance is one that is adopted annually, fiscally, at the fiscal year. It's a legal document that is meant to oversee, estimate revenues, establish appropriations, and levy taxes for unit of government for the coming year. It represents the fiscal policy of the Board. And what we want to do is make sure that we don't use one as a backdoor to another because that can cause some issues. So for example, when the early retirement incentive was first adopted, it came into the Personnel Ordinance, but then changes were amended through the Budget Ordinance. And this is not the way in which these two ordinances were meant to be. And so we want to make sure that going forward, that we maintain the separate purpose of each of those ordinances. Personnel Ordinance is really just this roadmap, as I said, for employees. It covers just the basics. So how do we determine position and classification plan? How do we go about recruiting and selecting employees? What are the conditions of employment? How do we deal with employee issues of disciplinary matters and separation? And that's what the Personnel Ordinance is about. So I'm going to get into some of the changes. These are the highlights of the changes. Again, if anyone has interest, the full detail is in the Personnel Ordinance in the redline copy. The first thing we did was just clean up language around limitations on employment of relatives. We want to ensure that there's no conflict of interest between supervisors and employees when there's some kind of familiar relationship, and that ensures that there's no supervision of a relative where you have someone who's a direct report. We also wanted to make sure that we limited indirect supervision of employees and that there were proper protections in place should that exist. As you know, when Mandy became the County Manager, she disclosed that she had another relative working within county government. That's public, and that's now we're able to manage around that potential conflict of interest or perception of that. The other thing that was in the ordinance that we took out or were recommending to take out is that it currently puts a firewall up between staff and the Board of Commissioners and making it a misdemeanor for the Board of Commissioners to provide any directive to a staff. And we're recommending deleting this from the ordinance while still respecting the hierarchy of reporting. So, you know, we want Commissioners to feel that they can come and talk to staff and that they can get questions answered. That's good for all of us to have a good, healthy organization, and we don't want to have that in there as a way of quieting that or not allowing that to happen. We have also, in that same vein, we are creating more measures to ensure that employees feel free to speak up. And this kind of speaks to what Mr. Harris was speaking about earlier, that we need to create spaces within an organization so that employees feel safe. And we're doing that through an Employee Protection Hotline, and this is a number that's answered by an independent third party, and it's available to all employees as well as the public. And you can register a complaint or a concern, and you can do that anonymously. And then those anonymous reports are directed then to our internal auditor, Terry Orange. And then it allows her, again, within that safe space, to investigate those concerns and to make any appropriate changes or follow-up action as a part of that. It's nice to have the Employee Protection Line, but we also wanted to have a policy in place that tells employees, not only are you protected for speaking up, but there'll be no retaliation. And so we're adopting the Employee Protection and No Retaliation Policy. And I was just going to read you just two pieces of that. The reporting responsibility, the Employee Protection Policy is intended to encourage and enable employees and Board members to raise serious concerns internally so that Buncombe County can address and correct inappropriate conduct and actions. So that's the responsibility of every employee. And then, no retaliation to deal with that. It's contrary to the values of Buncombe County for anyone to retaliate against any Board member or employee who in good faith reports an ethics violation or a suspected violation of law or policy. And again, this is so that employees have that safe space to speak up, and I appreciated Terry helping me with drafting this policy. With the new ordinance hopefully being adopted, we'll also be rolling out a campaign just again so employees know they have that space. We also wanted to, around being transparent, accountable, and equitable, we wanted to ensure that we had a structured way to recognize employee-driven innovation around efficiency and effectiveness. We're doing that by limiting, putting a cap of a thousand dollars on our ability to give bonuses or incentives to employees. And then to ensure that if we do award these to employees for work that goes above and beyond their current job description that is significant contribution, that we report this back to the Board within sixty days so that we can celebrate that as a community. If we have employees who are doing great things and rewarding them for that with a thousand dollar, up to a thousand dollar bonus, then we want to make sure that everybody's aware of that and that we celebrate that in public. We're also ensuring that we're following the letter of the law within the ordinance for how we define salary. So we have a new definition in the ordinance that is consistent with North Carolina general statute, that salary includes pay, benefits, incentives, bonuses, and any other types of deferred compensation. So for example, if we award somebody a thousand dollar bonus, then that would be part of their annual salary, or part of their salary, not annual salary. Within the ordinance, we also had instituted in a 2015 budget amendment that exempt employees on July one of each year would be given forty hours of exempt comp time. This was due to sunset after 2019, and we're recommending to discontinue this practice now. I'm not really sure why it was started, and then it's going to stop in 2019, but at this point, we feel like it kind of confuses the classification of an exempt employee, which is an exempt employee works to do a job and is provided a salary. They're not compensated by an hourly rate, and so we feel like it's better to go ahead and take this out of the ordinance at this time. The early retirement incentives were adopted to the Personnel and Budget ordinances, as I mentioned in the very beginning. And initially, these plans were excellent. They were cost-saving measures. The intention of them was to go ahead and have employees retire and then be able to freeze those positions and potentially not ever fill those positions again by distributing the work in a different way. It was meant to potentially bring those positions back with lower-paid salaried employees or on a different health benefit. So there were real advantages to the early retirement system incentive plan, but it's gone through a number of iterations. And we even got to the point in 2016 that we had to amend the plan so that we could also, we found that we had so many employees leaving. We have actually over a hundred and sixty people who've signed up for this have either taken or signed up for it. And that we were realizing that we were, in some ways, really disturbing our ability for business operations. So the County Manager amended it again in 2016 and allowed for the County Manager to actually advance a retention bonus instead of the one-year payout that would have been given for the early retirement incentive. And this was due to the fact that when we finally realized this was very successful, that we were losing key people in key positions. And so again, they deferred what they would have gotten if they had gotten the early retirement incentive. I mean, they got it early in order to stay on and work within the county system. So very important. But as I said, it's resulted in unintended consequences. We have one department, Permits and Inspections, that had five inspectors retire and one permit employee retire, all within a two-year span. It's very hard to deal with that much of subject matter expertise walking out the door. So we're asking to go ahead and sunset this program. It's no longer cost-effective. As I said, we have over a hundred and sixty people that have, since it started in 2014, either retired or planned to retire. And by ending, and recommending ending it by December first, just doing that at a base minimum will also save a million dollars for the county at this point. Because what's happened is, we can't afford to not fill those positions because we have so many people who are vacating. The proposed changes, what we're trying, what we're asking you all is that those employees who have already signed up for the early retirement incentive, that we honor those contracts. The employees who have twenty-eight years with Buncombe County and twenty-eight years with the North Carolina Retirement System honor before December first of this year, that they'll still be eligible to receive the incentive. They must also be eligible to retire before January one of 2020, and that they must, though, give us a letter of their intention to retire before December first with the date of retirement. And then we want to sunset that after December first. And then for all other employees, we do retain the retirement benefit that's outlined in the Personnel Ordinance under Article Seven, the Additional Employee Benefits, Section H, and that will remain in effect. So again, that is a retirement benefit that we've had for many years for employees when they retire. There's some additional changes that I wanted to just highlight, some of the bigger ones that were...
Can I do a quick question on the slide before? Can you go back?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks. I want to make sure that there is proper notification given. I know we will, but the multiple times for this, because it's December first, you want them to know if they have to send a letter in or they have to do something, you know, we need to make sure we have multiple reminders for them to be able to do that.
Absolutely. I appreciate your concern on that. What I have up here, I'm planning, starting tomorrow, to go out to the employees, and this is ready to roll. We'll have it posted if this is adopted tonight. We'll have it posted on County Central, and an email will be sent out to all employees first thing tomorrow morning. We've also drafted three different form letters that will be sent to the employees who are affected, directly affected by this. That's going out, so we have a form letter going out to employees who've signed up to say, "Don't worry, we're going to honor that." We have one going out to people that meet these eligibility requirements. If you're interested, you need to get into HR and talk to us. And so we're doing, and then the general email out to all employees to tell them that they need to go over the Personnel Ordinance changes because there are things in there that can affect them. So if you have other suggestions, I'd love to hear them because we really do want to make sure that we get this out to the employees and that they have a chance for that conversation back and forth as well. We good?
Yeah, that was good. I mean, you know, just multiple touches. They'll just need to be able to see it, you know.
Absolutely. Thank you for asking that. The additional change, any other questions before I go on with that with the early retirement incentive or any of the other things I've gone over so far? We are also changing the waiting period for new employees to obtain health coverage from ninety days. That was kind of a holdover from when we first adopted. We had been at six months, and then with the ACA, they said you could do up to ninety days, so we went to ninety days. But I did a search with other counties, and we are way outside the norm. Most counties do the thirty days or the first, effective the first day of the month following the first thirty days of waiting period, which is what we're doing. That allows us to get it in sync with payroll by doing it that way. We're asking for this to be effective the first of the year because it's kind of a moving machine right now with Blue Cross Blue Shield, and people signed up, and it's difficult to change that midstream. We're also asking to allow us, employees who are being rehired or employees who are transferring from within the North Carolina State Retirement System, these are employees that come with knowledge about county government and positions within county government. We want to be able to attract and hire those employees. And so we're asking that we allow them to use their time in the governmental system for the basis for their accrual of annual leave. Oftentimes, when you have a seasoned employee who's got a lot of experience and they're coming into a position, they don't want to start back at a two-year annual leave time period. So we feel like this would be good for our recruitment efforts. We've also reinstituted the voluntary shared lead program for employees. These are, this is a lead program where employees are able to donate their annual leave to employees who are suffering from a catastrophic medical condition. And so we feel like this was something that we took off. There was reasons at the time that we took it off, but we've heard from employees that this is something that they value, and we think it's important for that to be a part of the ordinance. And then finally, given that North Carolina recognizes same-sex marriages, we are no longer endorsing the Domestic Partner Benefit as one of our benefits. We feel like that was an equity issue when we first introduced it, but that now that that's no longer an issue, that we don't believe that that policy needs to be in effect. We want a grandfather in those who are currently signed up for the Domestic Partner Benefit, so anyone who's already in the program will be allowed to continue with that program, but we're recommending discontinuing that after this. So that's a lot of information. You know that we were given this information ahead of time. I know it's a lot to absorb, but really, at the end of the day, we're really trying to balance this spot between our ability to maintain a strong professional workforce and the public, and being accountable to the public and the taxpayer in our organization. And it's a balance, and so it does require some tweaking over time as we look at the needs. As Commissioner Belcher was able to say, it's important we communicate this to our employees. And so these are the drop-in sessions that I'll be doing over the next, actually, two weeks. And I'm very happy to take any questions if you have them at this time.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Eby. Any questions from the Board at this time? We will take public comment on the proposed personnel changes, but are there any questions at this time? All right, seeing none, I'm going to open it up for public comment. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment on the proposed revisions to the Buncombe County Personnel Ordinance? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Board for questions, discussion, or a motion.
I'd like to, one, comment and also make a motion to approve these changes.
I'd like to, one, comment and also make a motion to approve these changes. I want to thank all of you for, this was a lot of work in a very short time. And it's thorough. And to me, two things. One, the transparency it will afford the public and who we work for. And also, the protections it will give to employees. Thank you.
I also want to make a comment on, there is five pages in this report. The report's 168 pages. So, but there are five pages that detail the changes for the team members. And I think it's very well done. And the detail is very clear in there, I think. So, and if there's, if, I'm sure that if anyone saw something there and they have additional questions, they'll just be able to contact and get clarity on any of those.
I'd like to second the motion.
I'd like to say there's been a lot of work done in the last month and a half to reverse a lot that's, I feel like's been wrong. So all I can say is, yes, I'm for this. Thank you, Ms. Eby. Thank you, Ms. Stone, for putting the team together. Thank the staff, all the staff at Buncombe County and our sheriffs that come and protect us here for what you do. That's the main thing for us, so. As I said a little while ago, this is a different day. And it's not going to be easy for a little while. But we're going to get there. So, thank you again.
I have just one question. And it's, you know, the staff have briefed us on this. These policy changes are very detailed and extensive. So we've been sort of walking through this and understanding the suggestions informally in preparation for the public hearing tonight. And I think, I also want to just echo my appreciation for bringing forward these revisions. I think they're very well thought out and will be really beneficial for the organization. The only other idea that I had as I was kind of thinking about these changes and the kind of the goals they're getting at is, you know, we periodically receive information requests from the public or the media around compensation of county public employees, including the commissioners themselves. And so the one other, you know, thought I had was just to make that process easier and just to make it fully accessible for folks who are interested in that, that we just disclose all of that information on an ongoing basis so that it's just available. If you want to know what public taxpayer-paid employees make, here's that information. So I know I'm just kind of bringing that up. I mentioned it to the county manager when we were discussing it in a meeting, so I don't want to put people on the spot. But that was the only other idea I had that I thought might kind of also accentuate some of the, some of the direction we're trying to go in on this, so.
Thank you, Chairman, for reminding us of that. And we've built that system. And we'll be inviting the media in to preview that later this week. And it'll then be posted on the web. So they can access all of that just by going to the county web. Salary benefits, full compensation.
All right, thank you very much.
And I would like to too, thank you for the work that you've done. And also seeing, being a new commissioner, I was really surprised at some of the ordinances that we had. I couldn't believe what I was reading on some of them and how outdated they were. But I'm glad to see us make the needed changes. And these changes are going to be fair to all of our employees. And everybody will be playing by the same rules, so to speak, going forward. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I was just going to point out that, just for clarity, I mean, the last time that the Personnel Ordinance had a major revision was in 2012. So as Lisa pointed out, there's been a few changes over time through the Budget Ordinance and other sectors, mission creep or whatever you might want to call it. So this ordinance, which is attached, that we're proposing that this board approve, is an entire replacement and revision and wipes out anything that's not in conflict or not in concert therewith.
I just want to chime in and appreciate, Ms. Eby, your initial framing of this around really disentangling those two ordinances and us understanding the very clear guide stars that each needs to, function that each needs to play. And we'll be supporting this with a lot of enthusiasm for reasons that colleagues have already stated, so I won't be redundant about. But thank you for the hard work and the, I think, creative and rigorous thinking that's gone into this. And, you know, I think it's great that this series of conversations is happening on a departmental level. Any change within an organization can bring questions and anxieties. And just also want to take an opportunity for us to communicate to employees from Buncombe County that we hope there can be ongoing dialogue. And just recognize that even though we think these are very positive changes, that they are change and that there will be a process of adjustment through that. But it seems like you all have anticipated that well and have a lot in place to communicate around that and support employees during the transition.
I just wanted to add to Attorney Frue and Lisa, I really appreciate the clarity of this new block of work. There's no searching around. And I'm fairly simple-minded. So if I can read it and understand it and comprehend it, I feel that the transparency it will lend to our citizens is great.
And to Commissioner Bietraro's comment, certainly that if we go out and if we find that we have unintended consequences because of something that we changed in the ordinance, we will be coming back to you all and providing you with that information, so. Thank you.
Lisa, Mandy, thank y'all very much for a lot of hard work. And I really urge everyone listening, Facebook, whatever, that they need to really look at this because the changes are all positive. And since we've been working on this, meeting some of the county people that work here, the smiles that's on their faces now and people not worrying. As much as we've got going on all over the world and in the United States, we don't need that here in the county. And I think this is going to be very big.
I've heard really positive feedback, too. All right, any other comments or questions? There's a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance approving the revisions to the Buncombe County Personnel Ordinance. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Thank you very much. All right, that concludes the business of the county commission this evening. But I would be remiss if we did not acknowledge that one of our county commissioners is having a birthday this week. So we are all wishing Commissioner Mike Friar a very happy birthday this week, which I believe is tomorrow. So happy birthday, Commissioner Friar.
It's the big 7-0, right, Mike?
Seven-oh.
Well, I got past 69 anyway.
There you go.
I have a chap, let's put it that way.
We was really wanting to celebrate his birthday with him, and he said, "I hope we're not here on my birthday."
We have a great staff. We're working great together. This is, this is a great birthday. A lot of people know that I have cancer. But I went for a scan yesterday, and everything is good. So right now, you got to put up with me a little longer.
That's great, that's great.
Be sure and tell them after the meeting what I told you.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I've got two announcements. On October 10th, next Tuesday at 2:30 PM, the Buncombe County Commission will hold a workshop on the first-floor conference room at 200...
12:30, not 2:30.
I'm sorry, thank you. 12:30, 12:30 on Tuesday, October 10th, the county commission will hold a workshop in the first-floor conference room at 200 College Street. We will be focusing on a presentation from Sheriff Van Duncan about the Buncombe County Detention Facility and its operations and future policy considerations. So we look forward to that and encourage anyone interested to attend. As a workshop, we will not be taking any votes at that meeting, but I expect it to be highly informative. On Tuesday, October 17th at 5:00 PM, we will hold the next regular meeting of the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners in Room 326 here at 200 College Street in downtown Asheville. There is no closed session needed tonight. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye. All right, we're adjourned.